It's hot, it's too hot.
It looks like Falatiko talks.
It's 5:30 AM.
Alright, it's called call to order, but we are going to start with a brief presentation. Mr. Mayor, would you like to explain what that's about?
Hopefully somebody else is here to do it. This was the post on Campbell Avenue that we sold and put back in quarters, little bidding at the end. And it just is the quick recap of where it started. Guys did an impressive job, I think they thought they were going to be here to talk for a couple of minutes.
Do you want me to hold it for, and start with a mini cycle and see if they know?
Yeah, maybe if we can do that.
I saw that through a couple of different stages.
They replaced everything, they took it down to the studs, all the mechanics, all the electrical, they went right through that obviously. Everything inside except for the structure was brand new.
Okay, alright, so we'll hold off on this. I also just wanted to make the statement.
There they are now.
The other statement though I want to make is that we are not going to be dealing with the dog issue tonight. The police department has asked us to hold on that, they are in the process of putting together a comprehensive plan. I met with the top leadership the end of last week. They may have something for us by the end of the week, so as soon as we get that, we'll get it back on the agenda.
Just go right into Sarah.
Okay.
My apologies.
Thirty-seven seconds.
I want to run this to one of us please.
Sure.
To introduce, I've laid a little bit of groundwork, but...
Okay, I'm Chris Malizia, my brother David Malizia, my father. We all worked on this project at 2522 Campbell Avenue. It was a complete gut project, needed to be completely torn apart and rebuilt. You guys gave us the opportunity, I think about eight months ago. And just completely turned it around, and this is the video of us doing it.
Is there a way to put it on post?
So you want to be successful, huh? Well, there's one thing in this world that has the ability to change our whole life in an instant. You know what it is? It's action. So first step, you just need to make a decision. Ask yourself this. A year from now, five years from now, what are you going to wish you did today? The secret to getting ahead in this world is first getting started. The higher the expectation, the larger the goal, or the feeling just magnifies. So what's the difference between you and them? The professionals, they're the ones who are willing to knock on the doors of complete exhaustion every single day. Now let's define exhaustion for you. Exhaustion is at that very point where it's just so damn painful that you just can't push anymore, that it hurts so bad that you can't even think straight. It did reach that point when deep down you know that you did absolutely everything in your power, that there wasn't one more thing you could have done. So what's the difference between you then and you? What are you doing at this point in time? Ask yourself this. Are you moving closer towards your goals or are you moving farther away from them? Are you knocking on those doors of exhaustion or are you just uncomfortable? No one got to where they were without brick walls or stumbles along the way. Because no matter how good your ideas or how much work you're willing to put into it, there are always going to be those trickles. There's always going to be those people who say that it can't be done. But the only one who can prove them right or wrong is you. The only one holding you back is yourself. And any brick walls that comes your way, you just have to head yourself. Are you willing to get past the wall or are you going to let it stop you? Because these brick walls, they exist for one reason and one reason only, to signify how bad you want it to be. No business or endeavor was magically produced overnight. It is a result of getting past brick wall after brick wall. It all comes down to how you're willing to see your idea and your endeavor through to the end. You know, you can always point the finger at somebody else or something and say that that was the reason why you didn't get to where you wanted to be. People make excuses about being cocky and say that that's why they're not successful. Yet, in the 1980s, inflation and unemployment were worse than it is today. Now you can always point the finger at someone else and say that's the reason. But in the hour, it's all opinion. You have a choice every single day with what you're going to do with your life, who you're going to spend it with, or where you're going to spend your money. But if you just go out, do what your passion is about, what you believe in, you're going to be amazed at how far it's going to go.
And thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to purchase the house. We did make good on our word that we would go through that house with a fine tooth foam and fix it. We did, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
When are the next one?
I'm looking for the next one. I do want to buy another one.
Hopefully we'll be back to you shortly.
Alright, then I will call to order the finance committee and get into some discussion on the two-tiered interest rates regarding late tax payments. Ms. Prazzo, this was an issue you wanted us to bring up?
Yep, just to give everyone a little bit of background. We've been talking over the years. At one time, the city's interest rate on delinquent taxes was very, very low. It almost acted as an incentive to not pay your taxes because it was cheaper than taking a loan from the bank. So to combat that and to also discourage people from not paying their taxes, we instituted the current rate, which I believe is in the 20s, right?
Twenty-one percent.
And can I also mention, we've been getting complaints that people viewing this meeting with the air conditioning sound can't hear us. So if everybody could make it a point to speak up, it'd be awful. Sorry.
That's fine, I think generally my voice carries pretty well. I won't say I have a big mouth, but... So, anyway, right now we're about 21%. And what we're finding is people, you know, have personal stories of just hitting a hard time in their life and then not being able to recover from that. And we certainly want to keep our homeowners in their homes, especially our long-term homeowners and people that take good care of their property and want to pay the city and catch up if they've fallen behind for a specific reason. So I know that we talked about possibly using the star exception because we want this to certainly pertain more to home owners, home owner occupied homes. And I think Mr. Falatiko has something to report to us on that. And then also, Mr. Frank put together some information about surrounding cities and what they, I thought after we heard from Mr. Falatiko, we could just kind of understand what our neighbors are doing also.
Well, unfortunately, after looking into it, I don't believe that an option is available right now. There's a, the law allows for a set rate in terms of what the interest rate is going to be. It allows the municipality to set their own interest rate. We don't want to go with the default state rate. But in terms of having a two-tiered system, that's not something that I found is possible if we're even doing it wrong. The one thing closest that I found anyone ever doing was the city of Amsterdam back in the 90s got special authorization from the state so they could have a two-tiered system for lots that had buildings on it and vacant land. And that authorization, it ran out, I believe the year 2000. Not exactly what you're looking to do here, but that's the closest I can find. So the very least, I believe, required state authorization. And from what I've seen, I totally know that that would be an option.
So in doing some research, in Albany, it's 4% interest for the first month and then 1% for each month thereafter until the end of the year and then they turn it over to the county for collection. In Saratoga, it's 6% for the first month and then increases by 1.5% each month thereafter, but caps at 15%. In Troy, it starts at 3% for the county, 1% for the city, increases by the month. And then in Amsterdam, we hadn't heard back from them on what their percentage rate is. So, you know, I think we have some consideration here because there's a tremendous difference between what our neighbors are doing. And I don't disagree with our philosophy of making it inconvenient for people who don't pay their taxes, but to what end, right? So I guess with that, I'd just, you know, would like to open it for discussion in, you know, possibly finding a way that we might, you know, kind of massage this for our homeowners or for our property owners, even if we can't, you know, just limit it to owner occupied homes. I'm not sure if I'm allowed that.
You did a good job, but keep going.
Power crops.
I agree, I think we have to do something. Our interest rate is now at the point where, when it gets to that point, people can't pay it, then we foreclose on the house, then what do we do? Because that's extra work that comes upon the city and our workforce to take care of it. So I think if we look at the surrounding area, that's a good job of doing the research on that. It looks like they're capping at 15%, some don't cap, but turns over. But I think we should examine this and get that interest rate maybe someplace within other than credit card interest rate, which it's at right now. Because when people can't pay it, then what happens? They fall into fault further and further and further. And we're hearing, we're all hearing from good homeowners, that had a hard time for a year or two. And they're, they're could be losing their homes. And who are we going to replace them with? And if we don't replace them, what happens to that home? So I think for the betterment of the city, we have to find a common ground where the interest rate should be there because obviously what happened years ago, it wasn't coming up, people actually not to pay their taxes, you're right about that. You know, they could earn more money in the money market than paying the interest on the taxes. So that was the reason for raising it, but now it's up there pretty good. And once you start falling behind, just like with a credit card, you make that low payment every month and it just keeps building and building. So I think this is definitely something we have to look at and work on to whittle this down and make it a reasonable rate for anyone.
Well, I mean, I agree, I think really there's not a lot more to be said. But we all know that one of the things that we hear, a lot of people is that, you know, that our taxes are too high. So I don't know how to get there, but I think it's a place that we do need to be able to lower the interest rate. I'm not saying it needs to be lowered, I think 6% is the one that we call it. I'm not saying that we need to go from 21 down to 6, but I think there's someplace in between which we could, to be able to find ourselves.
Is there a way legally that we could create, like, the one case study that comes to mind here is, you know, a woman who's been in her house for, oh my goodness, since 1971, 43 years. She missed a year, was in around the whole selling off of the tax lien period of time. And she's been paying faithfully, but yet still her house is like at the brink of being foreclosure. Because whenever you pay taxes, it's on the previous year. So then the current year is crew the interest and she just can't dig out. So is there a way that we can say to a certain case study, a certain situation, that, okay, we'll provide you with a payment plan over the next year and it'll be at this interest rate. And if you default, then all bets are off and you're done. I mean, you know, can we approach it maybe that way to help people that may have missed taxes, you know, 10 years ago and they're still trying to dig out of the situation? I don't know, just another idea.
The council has some authority to waive the interest and the penalties that come along with, you know, when you pay your taxes on time. In terms of people who've fallen behind that long ago, you have to make, the payment you're making your taxes go towards the most current year before the years that...
Right, I'm sorry.
So in terms of somebody not being able to get ahead, you can get behind, you can be in tough situations, but you can't have taxes out of that hole that are still hanging around. And what I can do is, if the council wants to report on that, the next committee meeting, I can look into different ways of maybe be creative and see if I can come back with something. But specifics right now, I don't have.
Wait, yeah, no, I mean, I think this is probably going to end up being a bit of an ongoing discussion. Well, we continue to bring ideas to the table, but I wouldn't want to, you know, drag along too far. I'd like to, we've been talking about this for a while and I think it's time to take some action on it. But, and I apologize for, right, so she's paying her current taxes, but now she's in default for a couple of years ago, which is why she's coming to foreclosure. But, you know, would it be possible, like I said, if it were a situation like that, where the city could say, okay, you have a year, here's your payments with this level of interest on those payments, if you default on even one payment, the payment plan's done and you're, you know, we go forward with foreclosure? I don't know, just another idea. For people that are in the situation already.
You can definitely look into what exactly, definitely the council has some authority to act in that situation and to see if this is accurate. How do you rate it out?
And it would have to hinge on the person making payments in good faith, you know, all along to get caught up. But then, so I guess there's two separate issues. We have an issue with a situation like this where somebody is, you know, maybe a year behind, but it's heading toward foreclosure. And then also, what we do as a whole for the rate to be a little more reasonable. And I agree, I mean, it should be in the teens, maybe not go down really low because we still want it to be a major deterrent for people.
But we also want it to be enough to attack.
But not to the point where you can't dig out.
So you're looking more like a case-by-case basis?
No, I think we should look at the interest rate as a whole, but then a stipulation for specific cases where the city can set up a payment plan and have it, you know, have them be accountable for that payment plan. And I don't know if that's possible or not, just an idea.
We have tried to wait for the payment plan, we'll tell people that you owe X dollars and if you pay so much a month over X months, it will resolve at negative position. So we'll accept the partial payments, but it just requires those individuals to have the discipline to really pay it every month.
Mr. Iggy?
I think especially in this lady's case, some of the ambiguity comes from when ATF bought the liens. She was making faithful payments to ATF. And that's, that's where everything got balled up in her case. She thought she was good to go, but she wasn't. You know, the ATF wasn't really good at letting them know, wait a minute, you stole the city's two hundred current taxes. She thought she was making this payment and everything was fine, but it wasn't. So are we culpable in that? Really not, not. That's ATF's thing, but a lot of people got into that. They really got into that deep hole with when ATF took the liens. And they didn't really realize, they set up a payment plan, oh, I'm not a payment plan, everything's good to go, made the payments. They thought they were okay, but they were okay with ATF, with that lien, but not with the city. And that's where the problem comes in. So this has to be worked out, there's a lot to work out.
Okay, any other questions or comments? So, Mr. Falatiko then, if you'll do a little more research on it and we can put this again in the next cycle. Continue the discussion.
Just if we could, so let me just redo an excerpt from this, so everybody knows exactly what the situation is. This spring, she received a notice of foreclosure for her 2012 taxes. Now, okay, so the city sold her debt to American Tax Funding. The taxes owed at that time were $4,000, but she's paid over $8,000 since then to ATF to clean up that debt. So in the spring, she received a notice of foreclosure on her 2012 taxes. She'd been paying her payments, but of course, they went to 2013 tax debt, so leaving the charges to build up on the 2012 tax debt. She has asked for an extension, but she only has until December of 2014 to pay or she can face foreclosure. So she talked to the tax clerk and they reminded her that the same day that that's due, to, you know, get her out of the danger of foreclosure, her 2014 taxes are due. So she's saying with interest, the amount that's now due is $9,000 instead of the $5,000, which is actually taxes, which the cycle, it just is perpetuating itself. So what I'm saying is, for a case like that, when a woman is a year behind now, can we make that portion of her taxes, we stop the interest, put in a payment plan in place, and not just pay us what you feel like it? Because she's looking at foreclosure and year after year after year, that's uncomfortable. And she's trying her hardest, where she pays the city back and, you know, she would have to make regular payments on that while she's paying her current taxes. So at the end of that year, she would be done. You know, and in general for this type of thing, maybe we stipulate that for people that owe two years of payment plan as possible, or I don't know. You know, I'm willing to hear from the mayor, incorporation council, and my colleagues on that. I'm just trying to bring forth some solution that when you have a person working their hardest to stay in their home and paying in good faith and pay double what they owe to try to get ahead, that we have maybe some option available for them to stay in their home.
Simple solution, we can help so decide what rate you want to charge and you will work out a production mechanism. With some rationale, flexibility to minimize situations where it's owner occupied for a period of time. And just so it's clear, I want to work with the owner occupied residents. I don't have the sympathy of the investor, a little property, or someone who's had big taxes for four or five years. But the other option would be is if it's not currently available under state law, we should go back to the state legislature and say, we need that flexibility to best manage the real estate in the city. If the council would decide an interest rate, we will let them do it on the other side.
Okay, alright.
In this case here, she's making out of the failed effort to pay her taxes. Can we look at reducing the county interest?
I just think that's...
Are we able to bring her somewhere where she's comfortable?
Yeah, I mean, I would rather get a plan in place where people can help themselves get out of this situation.
And then look at possible reducing the interest rate also. So that way we have more than the people will not able to pay their taxes and plus adding a high interest rate.
Absolutely, I think we should reduce it. How do you want to proceed at this point so that we just don't, you know, talk about this?
Should we, the finance committee, meet over the...
Mr. Iggy?
I would like to, if we could, in two weeks maybe, if we could all do some research and think of a reasonable interest rate is, that's what the mayor's asking us to do. If we come to a consensus on whether we all agree a good interest rate would be a good starting point for sure.
And if you could forward the information you collected on the surrounding municipalities, that would be helpful too.
I was thinking, we have a meeting of the finance committee sometime, maybe next week, with, you know, with all our folks, the finance, with our assessor, with some of the mayor's office, so we can kind of flush out some of these thoughts before we come into a committee meeting here. And again, just call for, put in the paper, put a notice, but if we can come up with some dates for next week, then I'd certainly be glad to do that and meet in that respect. So at least we can work out the details with the folks, our department heads who really know what we need to do, and then we can come to the table with some more concrete ideas. If that's okay with you.
That's fine with me.
That's fine, I mean, I think that's...
Alright, so let's, at the end of this meeting, let's, the three of us...
Certainly. And it's open to the public anyway, right? So we'll put that notification in the design.
Yep.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nothing else to come before finance, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn? Ooh, seconded, all in favor?
Thank you, and we have the committee of administrative efficiency, we have one for discussion, the business license, and Ms. Porphy?
Yes, just to kind of give you a little bit of information about it. The question I'm raising is, when, when a business wants to open its United States, as far as its United States, what kind of licenses are we requiring? And at the outset, should we minimally, at least have them show proof of their licensure, that they, let's say if they're a hair salon, that they're actually licensed to do hair, and they don't just open a business and do hair? So, I know Christine is here to tell us what's required right now. And I also was given a copy of permits that are issued through the clerk's office and then there's some other that are issued through home enforcement. So basically...
Christine, would you come down this way? That way you can be on camera.
That's why she's going on there.
So, I'm not asking that, that planning do any additional information, but if someone is required by the state of New York to do whatever business initiative they're doing or wherever their license is required, that when they come to open their business, that they simply show proof that they have a current license at the time when they're opening their business. So that we make sure that we at least cover that base. So can you just tell us what, how it currently works?
The planning commission has a change in tenancy review for all businesses that relocate to the city or move within the city. And really, it's just a review of the condition of the outside of the building and surrounding property. Doesn't have much to do with the goings-ons of the business, correct? We check to make sure that it's in allowed use, obviously, in that zoning district, but we don't get into the licensing, if there's other state licenses or anything like that. It's really just related to the property itself. But it would not be difficult to require them to provide a copy of their license just so we can make sure they have it.
Is this something that we got to forget?
Speak up, I can't hear you.
Is that something that city council has to change in order for your office to...
I don't think so, what do you think, Carl?
One thing we discussed is, Christine, in court with the attorneys at the planning commission meetings, the planning commission has the ability to put some requirements on the approval that they give these businesses before they open. So for a business like a hair salon, when they open up or when they go before the planning commission, they might not know who all their employees are going to be yet, so they can't give proof. But it could be that, you know, within X number of days of opening, it's by proof that all your employees are licensed, whatever licenses they need. And then that would be a way to, I think, take care of the problem that you're addressing without worrying before they're actually, by the council, if you have...
And if their sole proprietor, if their sole proprietor, that they would, they would have to have a licensure at the time that they're opening their business?
Is there another governing body that, I would assume that, you know, the state checks licenses and things of that nature, I mean, is it, isn't there another...
Mechanical, it's DMV, you know, if it's a barber shop or a mechanical shop, DMV. You oversee it, yeah, and they oversee it too, to make sure that you have your tech.
So with the Department of State, so with the Department of Education, they got the licenses?
Not sure.
My only hesitation, I mean, I think, you know, everybody should be certainly a responsible business owner, but what about the business owner that, like, stays opening a salon? business owner, but what about the business owner that, like, stays opening a salon while they're getting their license? And will, you know, will the planning commission not allow them to go forward with creating their salon until they get there? Because that's, that would be, I think, not good.
No, we could make it a condition of the approval, that just before they open their doors and start working, that they provide that copy of their license. So we would let them move forward to that point. And to answer your question, all state-approved licenses or issued licenses would be checked by the state.
Right.
It's not something we really have purview to, you know, give them a violation if they don't have it, but we could prevent them from, we make it a condition of city plan review. We can prevent them from operating without providing that copy of the license.
I guess what I was getting at is, are we duplicating efforts that already exist? And should we be doing that at the city level, considering how taxed we are staffing?
It's to begin, and I don't know. I answered that question. That's where I was coming from. We're not asking them to, we're not asking our planning commission to give, ask them to put in more licensure. We're not asking them to go to professional licensing to make sure that they're licensed. What we're asking is, the person who's applying and wants to open their business, to show their proof. They have to have it anyway. So we just want one more xeroxed piece of paper that says, yes, I am licensed to operate for this type of business, and here's my current license at the time of opening business, understanding that things may change. But if you're opening a business and it requires a license, I really can't imagine there'd be any reason why you could not produce that. And if you can't produce it, then that becomes the question. So it's not anything additional. We're not asking to do anything except produce additional piece of paper that says, I am a licensed person to do X, Y, Z.
Or I will be hiring licensed people.
Right.
And then it would fall, because the owner may not have that license if they're overseeing a hair salon or a hair salon.
They may not?
You know.
So this would pertain to all businesses that have a state-issued license?
That would be my preference. Just show up and have your license. I mean, unless somebody thinks that's a real hardship on a business, I don't see how it could be. So therefore, what we're doing for people who use businesses in the city of San Antonio, just so that, you know, this situation came up where someone went to a salon and was taken care of by someone who was not licensed, and they were the sole proprietor in that business. And so, you know, and that person, of course, you know, brought that situation forward. So if this, if we had it the way we're discussing now, where you had to have a licensure of your business, that business would not have been open until she passed her exams in order to run that salon and do, you know, do people's hair? So that's what's taking care of that situation.
So are we talking all businesses? Are we talking, like, I could come thinking of tattoo parlors, you know, the gold buying businesses?
Do you need a license?
I don't know. I mean, I think you do. I pretty much believe you do. So that's, are we just going to go across the board? Are we being specific to some certain businesses, or what are we looking to do here?
I would not choose any particular business that you, because of what you do, you work as a chemical, you have to have it, and you, because you don't, you don't. It's every business that requires a license that makes the plan simple. You don't-
Whether it's state or local or whatever.
Whatever the license is. Just show a copy of it, that you have it and it's current.
Something you want to draft up for us, or between Carl and yourself, just to show us a little?
I don't know that it's anything that we have to do, that we have to formally approve. I think this is, Christine's saying it's something that she can deal with.
The planning commission's willing to add that as a condition, so we can take the lead on that, and then there shouldn't be any legislative action.
Right. And my point is just to make sure that what we're specifically looking for is included in there, though, to make sure it's a nice cover-all statement, that I think would cover the businesses we're really concerned about, and again, not to discriminate any businesses either. Just to show us a draft, just something that the planning commission is looking to ask the prospective business owner the question, what would that be, and what are you going to cover?
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Okay with that? You okay with that?
I'll find that.
Should I say here again? You've got a lot of stuff to do, my friend. Hope we're getting some help here, so. All right. Any other discussion come before, yes?
Christine's here. When somebody opens a convenience store, hours of operation part of their application?
There's, yes, they are asked what their planned hours of operation are. I can't say that they would be in violation if they decided to stay open later, because we don't put conditions of hours of operation on any businesses.
So if they want to stay open 24 hours, they can?
They can.
Because that's becoming an issue in some neighborhoods, should we be probably aware of?
Yes, we've been working on the convenience store legislation.
I can understand if some of these maybe operating and quiet kind of business, but some of these businesses, from what the complaints I'm getting, is kind of out of hand with the late night, and I'm talking about 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning activity that's going on.
I agree.
So is there some way we can get some teeth in the-
Yeah, that's what we're working on now, is getting teeth in the law. And what we're thinking about now is requiring a special use permit for convenience stores. And then that gives us really strict authority to be able to regulate hours, and especially in residential districts, that's definitely a concern for all of us.
I do know that from being on the zoning board, though, when you're talking about a use variance, we have included hours of operation on use variances for convenience stores specifically that are looking to move into a neighborhood.
So that's good.
Sometimes things do apply depending on, but this was also a number of years ago, so, but.
Good. Thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you for coming. Motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Say, "A," we are adjourned. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to call City Development and Planning to order on, I'll invite Mr. Wallen to come forward, talk about a revocable permit for 200 State Street.
Good evening. It's the revocable permit for 200 State Street. It's a newly renovated building on the corner of South Bay and State. It was, come to our attention that the building was slightly modified to include two architectural projections from the second floor. The projections extended to the right-of-way approximately two feet, seven inches, with downward lighting on the sidewalks below. Spoke with a previous corporate counsel regarding the best way to proceed with this, and he recommended revocable permit. So we approached the business owner about putting one up. He came and filled out the paperwork, and that's what we have in front of us.
Questions?
This covers both projections on the South Bay and the State, even though it's the one address we would associate the permits with the building.
I'm supportive.
So this was something that you already put up, and you noticed it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, it was put up, and how it was is that when the developer comes in, the plans are usually for first story. The second story had an elevation, and we didn't notice that they put this architectural design into it that it projected out. So while we were doing the lower State Street project, it became apparent that this was out over the right-of-way. And we've since put in a conversation with codes, because it came into a gray area of codes. When they look at a floor plan elevation, elevations of floor plans do not show property lines. Property lines are only shown for the first floor with a survey. So it is something that we are now aware of, and that we're looking to make sure we kind of dial back. So this should have been part of their original, before they even started construction.
Mr. Kozier?
Did we, did Mr. Mallon provide the certificate of insurance and the additional insured with the state of San Antonio?
Yes.
That's all done already?
Yes, it wasn't insured yet.
He says he shall, okay.
Yep, no, he has.
He hasn't?
Yep.
Anything else?
We don't issue permits without insurance, I'm fine.
No other comments? I'll undertake a motion to approve this. Moved, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have a second item to come while Mr. Wallen is here regarding the Erie Boulevard project.
This was a miss on my behalf last committee meeting. Typically, what we do is, this is regarding the Erie and North Street intersection improvement project. I believe it was the last cycle what we approved was accepting funding for supplemental agreement number one, which was $175,000 to cover the design and the right-of-way acquisition phase of the project. However, I failed to simultaneously move the expenditures of the money so that Bartle Judas can continue with the work, so that this is to increase Bartle Judas' base agreement with the city in an amount of approximately $133,000 to finalize the design of the intersection improvement and the right-of-way paperwork.
Questions?
I'm going to be a moderator here to work at this, I think.
It's like one in a minute or two.
Oh, sure, go right ahead.
Materials.
Yeah, the numbers are all the last page. The numbers of it, the attachment is the last page, which shows-
Let's go to a commercial break, and we'll come back down.
And increases. Yeah, sure.
Last few pages, you said?
Part B, I can show you. Oh, there's a, no, it is, sorry, it would have been the last page, but we put a Schedule A on there, so it is right before the Schedule A, which shows that the amount of this agreement is $136,486, with $122,000 of it for design, $2,300 for right-of-way incidentals, $11,000 for right-of-way acquisition.
January?
Right before there.
Right before there.
Right there, sir. That's the, that's the cost breakdown of the supplemental agreement.
Oh, okay. That, thank you.
So just to recap what this was, it's the project.
Okay.
You know, it proceeded with the four base alternatives. The alternative that was selected at the time, the preferred alternative was a roundabout. There was no funding for a roundabout. Through a little bit of accounting, DOT did find additional money. This project was deemed acceptable to receive it. We got $1.5 million of additional funding, the majority of which goes to construction. However, the design of a roundabout is more intricate than the design of the conventional intersection, so our consultant's base fee was increased that amount, the $133, to cover the design of the roundabout. This is all reimbursable under the federal aid project.
Any other questions?
Lead right into the new hotel, correct?
Just around.
Just around, just around the hotel.
Yep. All right, I'll undertake a motion to approve this. Seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
All right. Convenience store moratorium, Mr. Falotico.
The moratorium, the council additionally voted on, it runs out on September 15th, and I know right now internally, the city's working on an exact line that we'd like to use, so request to have that extended for an additional nine days. In order to do that, we have another public hearing.
Okay, so this is calling for a public hearing. Okay, moved, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Home funding adoption amendment. Christine, are you doing this? Oh, Mr. Frank, okay.
Wow. Everybody's getting it. What this is, is a proposed amendment to the 2014 facility plan. This would take in ACOM that the program took in from other projects that previously funded and allocated towards doing minor renovations or relocations to property that we just took in for the recent foreclosures, with the idea that we would then market them for low and moderate income use.
Questions? Ms. Porterfield?
David, how did we identify the properties?
What we did is, we went through all of the properties that came in through the foreclosure. The ones that were immediately marketable, those are being set aside to be listed. So these are properties that have some kind of issue to them, and then we're going through and doing evaluations, or building inspectors going through each individual property, trying to identify which ones can be done through sort of moderately enough.
Mr. Kozier?
Thank you. Mr. Frank, is this something we could tie in with possibly in the near future with youth build, with Northeast Parent and Child, with the outstanding program they have with our students and youth residing in San Antonio County, or working on building trades, plumbers, electricians, roofers, and maybe get these folks involved in this? I know we cooperate them with MHA, municipal housing, where they're actually doing our painting of all our apartments now at municipal housing. I think it'd be a wonderful partnership if we could somehow tie this in with our youth build program, giving us some, you know, hands-on experience and really working and helping the city at the same time.
Yeah, it's one of the partnerships that we have looked at. What we're trying to get a better assessment of is exactly what type of work would have to be done in each of these properties. So our building inspectors doing an evaluation of each of the properties. Once we have a list, then they'll start looking at what partners would best fit the needs of those individual properties.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up there, but Ken, we have great connections with Jen Morris.
We don't have a partner yet. No, right now, this is a city administered program because it's our property.
That's where you're going.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, then I will undertake a motion to approve this.
I'll pull it.
Okay, Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Ms. Prasso, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Affirmative action advisory board appointments. Mr. Mayor, whether you want to address that? We have a memo from you.
Two additional names which would fill out the roster, which the board is working on, maybe initially, we do not have, getting together, so this would complete the board in the near future, so they will have to work on all those areas of mutual concern.
Ms. Porterfield?
Yeah, just to update, the board actually met for their initial meeting, and one of the, one of the things they asked is, they want it to be able to move forward and do orientation, and we think it takes to let everyone understand what their role and responsibilities are. And so one of the things they wanted was to be able to do that with the full board. So thank you very much, Mayor, for making those appointments, so now they can forward to having call meetings and getting organized and doing all the things they need to have. And I, you move that?
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Prasso, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the last one is ceremonial resolution for the Electric City Bike Rescue. My understanding, I guess, Mr. Frank, you can maybe explain better than I.
Actually-
Mr. Puckman? Can explain better than I?
I can explain.
Okay, Ms. Porterfield?
I'm actually pretty familiar with the Electric City Bike Rescue. It's a group of volunteers that apparently they house at the Edison Tech Center, and what they do is repair bikes and give them to, so to use a bicycle is their basic means of transportation. And they also go to neighborhoods and do what they call events, where if you have a bike, you can bring your bike and they'll pick it up free of charge, and, you know, you go right away with the, you know, your bike in good, in good shape. And actually, the Hampton Health Association is working with this currently for them to get house in a larger space. So it's a great, great work that they do, and you're, you know, just looking to stand all over, so I'd be happy to approve a resolution for them.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. If there's nothing else to come before City Development and Planning, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye. And I will call to order government operations. I would assume this is a ceremonial resolution for Hispanic Heritage Fund?
That's correct.
As a person who had the formative flagrant, you're not for it? I can examine who else is with us. Beautiful, interesting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there enough, any other business to come before the Government Operations Committee?
Non adjourned?
Seconded. All those favor?
Aye.
Okay, call to order health and recreation. Couple things on the agenda, both of them regarding this time's park fee. Okay, we passed a resolution last Monday that we could set fees by resolution. So what you have before you is other fees that were brought to us, were developed by the UCL organization and the folks that they're working with in terms of the rest of fees with the day and at the building. Since we, they brought these fees, they've also sent additional information, wanting to make some changes within their, not the fees, not the amounts, but the times that they're open, Chuck has copies of the changes that they're asking for. So in your package, you have the original fees and language that was given, and they just asked to make a couple of changes in the language. They don't set the fees in any way.
All right. Sure. Has a copy of the, and I'll just point out what the changes are. On the very last one with, with the use of the pavilion, the kitchen, the bathroom, the meeting, initially they said they would do, that would include setup. They would like to omit setting up of tables and chairs, simply because some people want things set up the way they want them for their particular event. So it makes them to set up a, you know, a standard classroom style or whatever style and then have to change. So they would want to take that out. Additionally, it says from May to October, they wanted to omit from May to October because they want people to be able to meet in the building during any time of year that the building is useful. Yes.
You want to go? Again, just, I have two questions. The first one, if I can back up. So are we allowing them to use our own tables and chairs that are provided by the city for that first piece, including setup of table and chair?
My understanding is the tables and chairs stuff are in there. It's what's in there.
Okay.
So they've had donated.
Right. Exactly.
Yes.
And then the May to October, so that means we're keeping that pavilion heated all winter? We're gonna be running the heat in there?
Well, you couldn't heat a pavilion. It has to be sized.
Or maybe not pavilion, I'm sorry. The, the meeting room. The meeting room.
It's, we're still trying to judge what the level of interest would be, what the cost is of those options. Either shutting it down, being able to reopen it. Staff is just working out. They don't have a firm plan saying, yes, we're gonna keep it open year-round. Reality is, I assume that there won't be as much interest this year, but over the next two or three years, as people see how nice it is. They can come in there during the summer, may look to avail themselves utilizing it in colder months. And we would want to keep it open on a more regular basis. There are some expenses with that, but have these fees offset some of those increased costs that we would have for natural gas or electricity.
I think we have to be concerned with also is when that, or the, keep calling it pavilion, but when that meeting room was constructed, are all the pipes insulated inside the wall for, for winter use? Because I think it was designed for us to be draining it, shutting it right off at the curb cop there and drained for the winter. Because we don't have those lines insulated in the walls, we are gonna have split, if the heat goes out for some reason, it's gonna be like a sprinkler system in there. And that's what happened to us originally. I mean, I was on the original, we went back in 2000 with Louise DeFabian and folks. And, and we had more split lines in there than you could shake a stick at. And I'm just not comfortable saying that, yeah, we're gonna use it through winter time. Because I can just imagine what's the cost for the heat, to heat that place up with insulation or lack of insulation, what our cost's gonna be for utilities. And also the threat of frozen water lines. If the heater goes out, the furnace goes out, frozen water lines, and then we're gonna have everything that's gonna be completely damaged and destroyed in there. So, yeah, I still like the seasonal aspect of it for some reason, but I certainly go along with whatever we're talking about. But I just see the wrong end of the part of this, where we're gonna have some, some problems with winterizing these.
Ms. Prasso.
Does omitting May to October make, give us any obligation to have people using it in the winter?
No.
Right. So, I mean, I, I don't see, you know, why limit the idea Mr. Frank wants to weigh in. But I would assume it doesn't mean that we can't say, no, I'm sorry, the pavilion's closed in December.
Just to provide one certification in that form that I gave you guys was just to show you the format of how we do the Steinman's park. But I think hours of all those things apparently are distributed by parts of the park. Why would you set by resolution if the fees themselves?
Not the other, not the, we have nothing to say. Then I already go. That's not over. Not at all. Okay. Yeah, I just worried about frozen lines and our cost to heat the place. Hey, that was bread and butter, baby. When those frozen water lines came in, that was money in the bank, man. We used to pray for frozen water. All right. I'm sorry, so.
Oh, that's okay. While we're having a discussion. We have the other thing that they wanted to do Monday through Friday, because there was no timeframe in it, no date sent before. And also they added the word that agencies would, they added the word cleanliness, that the agencies would be responsible for the funding and stuff. The only other change or request is that when they, when people pay, the checks remain payable to the city's connected forest Steinman's park, so that we know that the money came in specifically through that, so that that's how the money came in. So it's not just through the city's connected, but then we'll know for what source it came.
Is that something that we can do? City's connected forest Steinman's park without setting up any, you know, agency agreement?
They're asking for an account.
Oh, they're asking?
That was, that's before they are asking that.
Maybe in the memo, in the memo.
For a specific code for Steinman's parks, any revenue, for Steinman's parks, the rental can go directly to Steinman's park revenue code.
Just put it in the memo, in the memo portion.
Your memo, your memo for Steinman's park. So you have the check and it goes to the city's connected, you deposit it using the code.
And write a specific revenue code for Steinman's park revenue.
Okay.
Just one more please. And, and Mr. Frank, again, it's administrative. But the rentals are based on the floor block. Can we, again, it's based on availability, correct? That's, that would be automatically to be assumed that?
Yeah.
Because again, we have summer park programs there that are run, you know, from, from the youth barrel and from Sicum and Reverend Grisby's camp that was there. So during the day in that six-week period from 8:00 AM until 1:00 or 2:00, that park is really occupied with kids.
Well, I would think it's, if anybody else is using it, it's based on availability.
Right.
This literally pops into life exactly, which is like how it works in Steinman's park.
Yeah. Very good.
So.
Very good job. Nice job.
Those are the only change they're requesting. Even discussion, further discussion, all right?
Good job. Very nice. That's a great park. Take advantage of it.
You need to, you need to pass both things. Because we, we just had the public hearing on Monday night. We didn't vote on it.
All right. So I'll move the first one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, I'm not sure, hang in here.
So what we're doing is not saying, number one, that we are going to.
Set the fees.
Allow us to set it by resolution rather than ordinance. And then the second one is actually setting it.
So there's no further discussion where we set the fees now, as to what they are and what you see in front of you, which is discussed.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else to come before health and recreation?
Motion adjourned.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you.
Call to order public safety, Bulletproof Vest partnership grant, and also the New York State Attorney General Bulletproof Vest partnership grant. One and two.
One and two. Kind of talking collectively.
Yes.
These are two grants, one's provided by BJA, Bureau of Justice Assistance. The other one by the Attorney General's Office. The Attorney General's Office is actually new funding, kind of newer grant, established 2010, but first unrelatable. Both these match, the federal programs, a year old program we see. Didn't come at a better time. This year we anticipate buying for next year 67 vests. So with this, two pounds of funding actually gets almost just under 100% funding. We need like $1,500. We need by contract, negotiated five years, so we replace officers with vests every five years. We did it over the course of two, three years, but those are 150 officers. With that said, we have a large number of officers that need the vest next year. So we anticipated this cost coming down from a budget standpoint next year. And actually Attorney General's Office is now covering it. So it's kind of a win-win for us. We anticipate, we know we have to buy 62 vests next year for current members. Anticipate hiring five more hires, two vacancies that we have next year. So total 67 vests. I put the numbers in front of you. It's 30,000 and change for one, and 29,000 and change for the other. Anticipation is just under 62,000 for the vests. But that's, again, it's, I don't know, 97, 98% is covered.
So instead of, instead of doing a 50% match, we're actually offsetting. One is offset.
We checked with the ball today there. It's allowable for you to use one grant against the other, because we're not, both federal grants, we're not both state grants. You state against the federal.